Oh, I just like technology. They make our lives even more affectionate.
Listen, I've been doing it for about forty years. You know how annoying these are? Big ones are way worse. Way more annoying. Way more.
Wasn't it the guy that started?
It sounds like something. If anybody even a founder.
Okay. We're reporting, behave yourselves accordingly. Okay, seven thirty. We have got seven thirty, let's call a meeting, go on.
President's Flyer, United States of America, it was a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prano.
Here.
Mr. Natalie.
Here.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Nimitz. We have five presents. We've got five presents, we've got a quorum, we have a meeting. Uh, we can have a motion to approve the minutes of October eighteen, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved, Deatley.
Seconded. Moved by Deatley, seconded by Hoffman. Uh, any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, uh, roll call please. Uh, Mr. Natalie.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
We've got five positive votes, no negative votes, motion so passes. Okay, President's Report, uh, gubernatorial national disaster proclamation update. We once again, here on All Saints Day, get another gubernatorial disaster proclamation allowing us to conduct our meetings in the open meeting at remotely. So this evening, we have got some attending remotely, and we've got some here in person. Attending remotely is, uh, Mr. Schuster, the village attorney. Mr. Steele, the village engineer. Attending in person is trustee Prano, Deatley, Hardy, Hoffman, and Thor. Also with us in person this evening is the Director of Finance, Eugene Van, and the Director of Public Works, Kyle Killinger, myself, and the Village Guard, Anthony Mills. All present in the building. Okay. How many more of these gubernatorial things are we?
I just like the word gubernatorial.
Gubernatorial. Based on a lunar calendar sometime. Like every twenty-nine days or something, we get the change or something. Okay, anyway, the next item I've got, at seven o'clock this evening, according to the state statutes, we held a public hearing in regards to the village of Sleepy Hollow accepting credit cards. The public hearing was open and closed, there was no comments, it was no public. Uh, we have completed that end, now all I need is the board to approve the acceptance of the credit cards once the public hearing has been resolved, so. We have a motion to approve the acceptance of credit cards within the village of Sleepy Hollow.
So moved.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Hardy. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and all negative votes, a motion so passes. Okay.
I think it's so confused when you call me first.
Hey, we bounce around, keep people. Yeah, no one sleeps on my lawn. Uh, okay, I guess, well, we've got the newsletter, can I catch that, or you want me to catch that? They can do that, okay. Uh, the newsletter editors have informed me that they would like submissions submitted to them no later than November tenth next week, so that they can get a copy of the proposed newsletter to us for the approval on the fifteenth. Uh, Anthony, could I ask you a favor?
Yeah.
You guys did that thing on the building codes last month? Can you continue doing something like that going forward, sort of like what to expect?
Yeah.
Kind of thing?
No, I did it over till by then.
I know, that was, you know, that one page was, had a lot of information. I think we need to break it down into step one, two, three, kind of, you know. If you could do that, I think it would be really helpful, yeah. Kind of like what to expect when you have your driveway repaid?
Yeah.
The contractor should come in, it should remove, there should be an inspection of the final base.
Perception.
Something like that, just, you know, we don't need a whole page, you know, twelve hundred words or anything.
Right.
Maybe an ongoing kind of column, like a Lou from Man for Dini.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's it for the President's Report. Clark's Report, no report tonight, thank you, Tony. Planning and zoning, there's no report. Attorney Report, Mr. Schuster.
I'm sorry, I had to unmute, I have no report, we'll talk a little bit later, um, if Mr. Nimitz makes it or not, uh, underwater and sewer.
Okay, we'll circle back. Thank you, Mark. Uh, Engineer Report, Mr. Steele.
Uh, just no report really, except just to give you an update in regards to, uh, the work here. Um, they are planning on starting this week, uh, it's just been delayed just because of the weather and unfavorable temperatures, so, but everything's gonna be warming back up here, it looks like, and hopefully by the middle of this week is they will start that up.
Okay, that's it?
That is it.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Uh, Director of Finance, Mr. Van.
We have a request for warrants in the amount of one hundred thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and ten cents. So will we make a motion?
I'll make it.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by Deatley to approve the warrants of November first, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of a hundred, one, one hundred thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and.
Ten cents.
Ten cents. Any additions, deletions, comments, questions? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, more, so passes. Gentlemen.
I just wanted to give an update for those that didn't hear, on the test phase of the credit cards, in less than a month, we have had thirty-nine payments. Um, when they, we had stopped doing this back in two thousand thirteen or whatever, uh, they were doing like five or six a month. And so this is a very popular thing. Yeah.
It's a good thing.
We, we even get the huge chunks of them, like five or six in the mall at one time. Um, so we're expanding to vehicle stickers, pet tags, and building permits.
Cool.
Want to talk about the Treasurers' Report?
Treasurers' Report. Treasurers' Report was published on October twenty-ninth, ahead of the deadline. So, um, preliminary, um, audit finding, um, we're gonna get dinged on one minor thing, but, oh, we're gonna basically have a clean report. So that's just a heads up.
That's great, okay. All right, thank you, Eugene. Okay, comments from the public? No comments. Comments from the public, any public comments? None of those either, okay, Trustee Report, Roads and Parks, Mr. Hardy.
Well, let's see if you can get excited about rock salt. And I'm referring to page twenty on your packet.
Expense. I'll get you excited.
If you notice, it's about thirty bucks a ton, less than it was last year. Remember, last year it shot up in the nineties, so that will be a pretty good budget savings of about eighteen grand, I think. Am I right, half of eighteen grand?
Yeah.
So, uh, we need to approve the purchase order right there, what you see in front of you, for thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents, for rock salt. I might add, the five hundred and sixty pounds there is the minimum that we can mine. And we have two hundred tons left over from last year, and Kyle Fields said it should be sufficient to get us through winter.
Okay. We were budgeted, what, about fifty-four thousand dollars for salt?
Yeah. So. But they say.
No.
It's a traded item, so it's whatever the, the market does, it was a goofy year where the, the state bid, and then they withdrew their bid, I don't know if it's because they couldn't find trucking for a reasonable price, and then they resubmitted their bid, and that's what they came in with. And the thirty-five thousand will all be spent in one, I order as we go, so you'll get.
Five sixty is the minimum that we get.
Yes.
Where this is the state contract, where we say, we'll, we agree to buy a certain amount, and we have to meet at least eighty percent of that.
Right.
And we cannot go over twenty percent of it.
What happens if you, I suppose it's a really severe winter, and you run it. We can go twenty, twenty over. Twenty percent over, so, so I put in for saying a hundred tons every year. So you can go twenty percent over seven hundred tons, if we, if we don't order five hundred and sixty, I mean, we've always found a way to, if we don't have enough snow or anything like that, to figure out a way to get rid of the salt, but they charge a storage fee, starting in May, and it's, I, ten bucks a, a ton per day, which can really add up over time, so.
They may beg the question, why don't we order more, we just don't have. Storage capacity.
Storage capacity, yeah. I, I feel, you know, five hundred and sixty tons seems to be the sweet spot, really does, for, because you get those ice, those ice storms actually take up more salt than a, an eight-inch storm. You put down more salt during an ice storm than you do for a regular snowstorm, so I, five hundred and sixty tons has kind of been the, the perfect amount every year.
Okay.
So do we need a motion?
Now, we need a motion to. Contractual agreement.
Make the motion for the contractual agreement to budget for the five hundred and sixty tons of rock salt for this year's road maintenance.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, moved by Hardy, seconded by Thor to approve the purchase of rock salt through the state purchasing program at sixty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents per ton, with the maximum, uh, minimum purchase of five hundred and sixty tons for the season. Further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Okay, five affirmative votes, no negative votes, motion so passes.
Yeah, I might add that, uh, if trustee Prano thought that maybe we could earmark that savings toward parks, I would agree with him.
Uh. Eugene just suggested we earmark the savings toward the roof.
Towards the roof?
Yeah. Roof of the salt.
We'll have to discuss that in future.
Plenty of miles left in there, what do you need?
Miles, doesn't do much for the sun.
They have those decorative, uh, shingles that curl up like.
Yeah.
Add one other item, I'm just gonna throw out there for informational purposes, I've had two residents, two women in the village, who have volunteered to do the maintenance and prove, keep the entrances to Sleepy Hollow looking up to date. Um, I'm going to meet with them to discuss what they can and can't do. My own idea, would anybody object, and we won't, I'll find out more later, I'm not making a motion, would anyone object if we allocated a couple hundred bucks to reimburse them for their personal expenses, their receipts, not to be done before they have approval? Would anybody object to that, that, you know, okay, I'll report in more detail. More specifics after I meet with them. But I think it's, it's a positive thing when the residents step up and volunteer like this, I do encourage. That's all I have to report, Mr. Prano.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Uh, Finance, Mr. Hoffman.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, George. Uh, Water and Sewer, Mr. Nimitz was not able to join us yet this evening. Uh, Mr. Schuster, did you want to touch base briefly on his request?
I did, uh, if I may, and, uh, Tony, were you able to make copies?
I said, I sent it, I sent it to all of the trustees electronically.
Very well, so, at your last meeting, we talked, Mr. Nimitz started talking about, uh, issues concerning obstruction to components of the waterworks and sewerage system, duty to restore those if, uh, maintenance or repair work is required. And so, uh, I went ahead and went through, uh, chapter six, uh, and, and, uh, parts of that, mostly six dash three dash seven, made some, uh, proposed changes. Uh, Mr. Nimitz has had a chance to look those over, so he and I are, uh, in a position to propose those to the board. Uh, this, uh, so please read through that, and if, uh, before the next meeting, you have some questions or concerns, talk to Mr. Nimitz, or convey them to me by email, and, uh, or call, and, uh, we'll, uh, try to straighten that out, but in effect, we've attempted to clarify whose responsibility it is. The village has responsibility up to the B-box, up to the sanitary sewer tank, and after that, on-site improvements or pipes into the house, and that sort of thing are the responsibility of the homeowner, the property owner. But in addition, if the property owner constructs or places something that obstructs access to the village components, and the repair is necessary, then Mr. Killinger and his men will do what's required. But the obstruction would, restoration of the obstruction, if it was desired by the property owner, would, would be at his expense. So, so the village is not, um, on the hook for removing things that get in its way when it has to do the work that it's required to do under this uh, code regarding its, uh, waterworks and sewer system. So that's the goal, uh, and, and, uh, it's a little lengthy, uh, take a look at that before the next meeting, and then, uh, we'll have an ordinance on the agenda to adopt these amendments, and make them a permanent part of your code. Any questions tonight? All right, thank you, Mr. President, that's what Mr. Nimitz would have said if he was here.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, we'll let him know what you carried for him.
Can I add to the Water and Sewer, we had, we've had two main breaks in the last week and a half now.
Oh.
At Glen Oak, and one more, and then one on Hilltop today, started yesterday.
Started yesterday.
Just age?
I, I think it's the, the ground, the ground, all the rain, we had, they were, there are cracks in the pipe.
Oh.
So, there's some shifting going on.
Shifting going on, all right, got dry and then got wet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, would, uh, say the Hilltop.
Hilltop, uh, it was, actually, it was really convenient, where it was, is in between two valves, I think it was six houses total were affected, for.
Me, for two and a half hours.
That's pretty short.
I counted, I had to watch.
And then the one, uh, Glen Oak and Winmore, I think four houses, is right by a valve. And we have, uh, where it's at, there's, there's four valves right there, it just happened to be a convenient spot again.
Were either these in spots where we were planning on?
No. This isn't part of what we were looking at. No, those are actually, uh, I, I believe, the one, the one on Glen, Glen Oak and one more, that was part of the water main extension from, was nine years ago now. And then the, the one up by President's House, that, that means good, it just, just happened to be a crack because of the system, but. No, nothing like Hill Press.
Okay. Okay. All right, anything else on the water? Thank you, Kyle. Uh, Police and Public Safety, Mr. Deatley.
Thank you, yeah, quite a bit going on, uh, President Pickett and Chief Parma and myself met with group concerned citizens, um, last week on our speeding issues in the village. Um, it was a very good meeting, um, the residents came with a lot of concerns, a lot of ideas of different things we can do, we shared with them different things that we can do. Um, so they're definitely, you probably saw them, they had a tent out at the, uh, bonfire the other night, um, and very good ideas, we're all working for the common main thing, try to slow people down. Um, the word is getting out and things are working, if you saw in your report, uh, there's been a hundred and ten tickets written, and forty-one warning tickets written. Um, so that's, and that word is getting out, because I've talked to some other people from, uh, West Dundee, and they said, oh yeah, we hear you guys are cracking, you got lots of meetings, so.
Especially this one thing.
So, uh, so a very big meeting, um, the chief and I did a ride around to look at signage in the village, for our speed limit signs, um, some weight limit signs, if we need those, different things that we need, we did come up with a list. Um, I met with trustee Hardy, and we met with Kyle the other day, and Kyle was already on top of this, and had looked into the signs, and um, we actually have the signs on order, um, and I believe they're gonna be here hopefully sometime this week, right, Kyle?
Yeah, it should be this week or early next.
Yeah, and then we'll start getting them up from there, so, uh, appreciate the, the time that trustee Hardy took, and Kyle took, and being proactive. You know, and that was the nice thing with the situation, everybody's been very proactive in trying to slow this down. Um, also, one of the concerns was the bike path trails where they come out on Locust, and those are actually belong to West Dundee. Um, I did talk with Joe Cavallaro this morning, um, they are willing to work with us on doing some things there. Um, so I have taken pictures today, um, it's amazing what parking your Jeep does, make the traffic, it slows it down a big time. I had a truck almost come to a complete stop, because it's all in front of my Jeep, sticking up from the trees. So, um, but they're willing to work with us, uh, I've sent him some pictures of it, some ideas of what the chief had. Um, the one entrance has nothing, there's no, you know, post up or anything, it just has a stop sign, it's further in. Um, and the chief was thinking, maybe if we put three posts there, where it slows people down when they come out of that pass, where they have to turn right or left, instead of shooting straight out onto the road. So, you know, we're looking at that, looking at different ideas, different things.
I want a channel that I can just fly onto the road.
Well, that's, that'd be better, so we're looking at different.
I want an on-ramp. I want an on-ramp.
I would hope nobody comes flying out of there without stopping, they'd be nuts if they do.
Actually, it has been reported, there's been a few kids that fly out of there sometimes.
Some old man that pops out of there sometimes in the mornings, too.
Yeah.
So the good thing is, uh, so far, you know, West Dundee's willing to work with us on it, and, uh, possibly looking at more signees there, as well as that, so there'll be more coming on that. Um, as we follow, um, as I hear back from them, and see where they're at, that they thought that they could, that we're gonna be working on a project there later yet, this fall, and they think they can tail something in right to that, and we can get something up there, and so there's a little more notification for drivers coming down the road, that there's a bike trail there, and for people coming off the bike trail. So, uh, good news there. Um, just want to say, I mean, I know sometimes people take people for granted, we have some really good people working for this village, and, uh, I appreciate the help of Chief Parma, Sergeant Wilson, and the whole police department, and Kyle, like I said, he was above and beyond working on these sides before I even got to get to Ed, to get to Kyle, so, we have some great people that work here, and really care about what goes on in the community, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Because that's very well needed, and appreciated, so, more to come, but that's it for now.
All right, thanks, Steve, appreciate it. Okay, next, Public Buildings and Environment, Mr. Thor.
Uh, no report.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Building and Zoning Enforcement, Mr. Prano.
No report, sir.
Thank you, Anthony. Old Business, Chicago Region Climate Change Plan, Mr. Thor.
Yeah, um, do we want a motion and second before we talk about it? Sure.
Well, that's always good. Don't get in trouble that way.
All right, I, I, uh, do we vote on the Chicago Region Climate Plan Resolution five four zero?
Who's gonna somebody throw a wrench in here?
That's all right, I was at a meeting the other night.
No, the only reason I. All right, so we're just agreeing with buying in, I mean, with the rest of the state and a hundred and forty-three others, eh?
Right.
Maybe because I, I, I know a little too much about lithium and stuff like that.
Tastes terrible.
And I've been doing, I've done a fair amount of consulting with that, with a couple of upstart battery companies. And it scares me that we talk about climate, you know, everything going on today in Europe, and yet, I challenge any one of you to go on and look at the disposal of lithium, and what actually is the process right now? And you will find none, ninety-nine percent of the time, and a hundred and fifty other processes that they're still working with. And yet, lithium probably will be as bad, if not worse, than fossil fuel, mainly from a disposal. And yet, we're pushing all this alternative, and I'm not saying this, and I'm not looking one way to you, I'm all for alternative energy. But you, you've got to remember with lithium and with EV batteries, you know, they're charged right now by, in this state, probably nuclear, and some coal, other states, fossil fuels, nuclear, and stuff like that. So it takes energy to, you know, to expend, you know, you have to. And I, I guess I look at it this way, is, you know, we, we, everybody's jumping on the bandwagon here, and it's the right thing to do for the next generations or generations to come. But my, and I've actually written, uh, letters to some of our illustrious senators, and, uh, and others, and, you know, all you do is get a, uh, you get a canned response, you know, they don't even look at it, you know, everybody's just so focused on jump on the bandwagon with, you know, with, with the environment. And it is, but nobody's come up with a proposal with some of these alternatives, and, you know, twenty-five, thirty years from now, those generations we're talking about are gonna have to get rid of this, and how are they gonna get rid of it? And it is one nasty thing, and, and, but they're just hiding it right now, and Tesla says they recycle one hundred percent of it. Well, yes, they do, but if you ever saw their battery packs and how they're made, I think good luck getting one of those apart, and I'd like to know what they're doing and how they're recycling it, so would everybody else in the industry, so. That's just my opinion, and it comes from, you know, others too, that, that are, and maybe I'm not one just to jump on the bandwagon because everybody's doing it. Uh, you know, we've got to look at the impact that it has on future generations, and I don't think there's been enough of that done yet, especially today's announcement that by twenty thirty, they want to convert so many percentage of vehicles to EV technology, and people are beginning to learn now that, okay, you're gonna spend two hours at a charging station, charging it up. And, you know, they want to cut down on trips and car mileage and stuff like that, well, that will absolutely do it with EVs, because you won't get the mileage, you won't get the range out of an EV that you get out of a regular car, so. And again, it's just probably me because I know maybe more than I should about that stuff at this point, but it concerns me, because I look at it because I've got three grandchildren. And I'm wondering, where are they gonna put this stuff when it finally, and if you look at all the vehicles out there, there's gonna be a lot of it. I mean, a lot of it, and nobody's really given us a decent answer on that.
Well, tell you something, I mean, as part of this, uh, proclamation, um, in addition to they stated all these goals and, and all that stuff, and none of which were really obligated to, uh, to, uh, to do.
I saw that, that's why I was curious what that meant.
Well, it, it, it's, it, what it amounts to is an endorsement of this as a, uh, as a proclamation, and, and it kind of is a, um, a nod toward the, the, uh, the Metro West Council of Governments and, and, and the other kinds of Kane County organizations that are looking for this sort of a thing, and so, since some of them are instrumentally getting funding, I figure that, uh, we showing up and, uh, publicly joining onto this thing would be good. But what I want to tell you, and what, what's sort of interesting is that there's also a bunch of worksheets, and you actually can sit down and, and decide what you want to do, and how you want to do it, and how long you want to take to do it. And none of us. And none of it's honorous, and none of this, you know, none of the assessments that we would do, or none of these worksheets cost us a thing. That's the good news. I mean, there's, there's no cost really here at all. So I, I look at this as being, as there being two reasons why we might want to do this. One is for, like, the, uh, the environmental piece, and one of it is for our standing in the, uh, uh, local governments. But what I was gonna do is that, when I was putting those, uh, getting those, uh, spreadsheets out, may come and tap you for some help with that, and, and see what you think about some of that stuff. There's areas that you know a lot more than I do, so.
Well, just lucky I might know probably more than I should know about it, and it's structure and chemistry and stuff, and I just wonder how they're gonna get rid of it.
Oh, yeah.
That's all. That's, and that's gonna be a.
Answered questions. What do we do with the bands?
Right. But approving this puts us at the table for these discussions.
Because we're willing to, you know, to be a part of the solution rather than part of the problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of, you know, we're willing to be, as said, at the table. Okay, any further comments or questions?
I didn't hear a second.
A second.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm so confused.
I, I just, I heard the second, and then George was coming.
I felt like it had been for the second.
Okay, that's why you recall.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, no further discussion. Roll call, please. Um, Mr. Prano?
Hi.
Mr. Deatley?
Hi.
Mr. Hardy?
Hi.
Mr. Thor?
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, motion so passes. Okay. All right, are the resolution passes. Uh, any other old business come before the board?
Um, just one thing, just wanted to also thank the service club for, uh, Halloween in the hollow. The fire was a little wet, we understand. But, uh, it was still, it was a great event.
It was.
The turnout was great, and I heard a lot of great things about it, fireworks for a bonus, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do you take a total of how many people were there, John? Have any idea? That was a big crowd there.
I'd say several hundred. I mean, when I saw them lined up, easy, several hundred.
Whoever made the pile, wow. Good job.
I'll let Costco know.
I biked by the field today, and I saw the field. But that pile's gone. Wow.
Well, that wind, what, Sunday helped.
I pushed it up.
And you pushed it up this morning, guys, yeah.
So it was quite, quite, actually, the most leftover that I've ever seen this year, but.
That's the most leftover?
Yeah, it, it was almost like a big ring. Yeah.
It's like a metal wall.
Yeah, yeah.
Picture it all again.
Yeah, I just think, yeah.
I was gonna say, it was, probably there's gonna be a mess, what looked like Saturday evening trying to burn. I was afraid we'd end up in a smoldering pile, having to be hauled out, hazardous waste fees. Never mind, I look at the negative side. Okay, no other old business come before the board, new business, any new business come before the board? No, new business coming for the board?
I moved adjourned.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, roll call, please. Mr. Thor?
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi.
Mr. Prano?
Hi.
Mr. Deatley?
Hi.
Mr. Hardy?
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, we are adjourned. We're gonna see you folks on the fifteenth of November.